Monterey Road Complete Street Lane Reduction Discussion. We, in the past, use the term "road diet", and so you know, you've probably heard that term. But as you noted, you know, that's not the title for tonight, but Chris is going to walk us through what we did back in 2015, what we're thinking about now, all in light of trying to stimulate, you know, the economy and allow our businesses to have more flexibility. But before we go and do that, I have two different announcements that I want to make. And one is I'm going to turn it over to our Communication and Engagement Director, Maureen Tobin, and she's going to give us an update on testing. And then I have one other item I wanted to mention. So, Maureen, with that, if you wouldn't mind sharing with the group.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for joining us again for our Town Hall. Just wanted to really clarify with our community that testing for all is available. And although there's still some criteria, if you look on the county website, it really, there's capacity for testing, and now's a great time to get tested. So we're encouraging everyone in our community to get tested. DePaul Health Center is one of the testing sites. It is now open for everyone. That was not the case originally. It is still not easy to make a telephone appointment. So we recommend that you make an appointment online. And if you use SCCFreeTest.org, that's probably going to be the easiest way to find the DePaul testing site online registration. I've been working with the county directly to try and get them to correct their phone tree for the phone number they've provided for the testing at DePaul, but they still appear to be working on it. Anyway, at DePaul, you can get tested any day of the week now. Seven days a week, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. You do need that appointment, though. Don't just show up. And also, at Christopher High School in Gilroy, there's testing available. But for those of you who would like to get tested right here in Morgan Hill, highly recommend the DePaul site. I got tested there Monday morning, and it was simple. Drove in, they verified my information, and did the little swab in the nose, and off I went. So, encourage you to do it.
Great, thank you, Maureen. The other item that I just wanted to mention is just to talk about the county order in general. I know some questions have kind of risen about, you know, when does this current order end? The last one that was in place had a definitive date, and it was supposed to be in effect through May 31st. And they issued a new order that went into effect. The county issued a new order that went into effect Friday, May 22nd. And this order is different in that it doesn't have a specific end date. It's, um, end date is when it's rescinded or changed or updated by the county. And so we don't have, you know, a May 31st date anymore that, you know, we're looking at to know that the shelter in place has been lifted. A few different changes that the May 22nd order have relate to additional businesses. So retail stores may open for sale, so for curbside or outside pickup or delivery. And also with that, businesses that support retail and manufacturing goods, those are allowed to open. And then outdoor museums, historical sites, and outdoor gardens are now able to open. And the community was pretty excited about the car parades now being allowed. So there's rules, but people can celebrate birthdays and so forth as long as socially distancing is in place. And then there's protocols for businesses. And the county has specific items that have to be disclosed by businesses, and that they have to be posted, notifying their customers about what is required. And part of all this is that businesses are required to make sure that their employees, as well as people that come into businesses, are wearing face coverings. So I wanted to mention that. And then with that, I'd like to introduce Chris Gioni, our Public Services Director, and he's going to lead us through a brief presentation describing Monterey Road Complete Street and Lane Reduction potential program. Walk us through that, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments, and just ability for the community to provide their thoughts about this. And so with that, Chris.
Thanks, Christina, and I will be somewhat brief so we can get on to the conversation portion of our meeting tonight. Just before I get started, we are going to talk about the complete streets and turn the clock back to 2015. And just important to note as we do that, I have my teammates here who were intricately involved at that time with Maureen and Edith and Scott Creer. So they're going to help with questions as well. And in addition to kind of going over what we did in 2015, we're going to talk about, you know, just different uses of public space in the downtown and what maybe some different opportunities are, some things that, you know, from the city staff perspective, we think could work and other things we think probably won't work. And so, just kind of as I laid it out, we really want to talk about the 2015 pilot project that we did on complete streets, as well as what the potential is now to revisit that, and then potential alternative options for roadway changes that have been talked about by members of the community. Probably some of you on the phone tonight knows include, you know, different types of closures of Monterey Road, whether it's permanent closure of the whole road through downtown or closure on weekends. Those discussions have happened a lot, closures of side streets, and then alternative uses of our public spaces that might not be a road near sidewalk. And then open it up for thoughts from you all in the community. So, as I said, turning back the clock to 2015, the Complete Streets Project, as we call it, or Lane Reduction, really has been something that's been discussed for many, many, many years. I think it's over 20 years now. It was 15 years, five years ago. And it was included actually in our general plan since 2010, in the, when the transportation element was updated. And even in 2010, there wasn't consensus on which way it was going to go. So both alternatives were studied in the general plan. Both the two-lane configuration and the single-lane configuration were reviewed as potential options for the city going forward. And that's how it's been for the last 20 years. The thing that happened five years ago was convergence of several things. And that was with the end of redevelopment, the city actually ended up with dollars to invest in the downtown that we had to invest in a certain amount of time. And as that came about, the city used the general plan, our downtown-specific plan, to develop the, what we call the Downtown Place Making Investment Strategy. And that really was a strategy for helping to transform downtown at that time. And that strategy, a component of it, was this Complete Streets component. And that was included on a trial basis. And the reason for this was to really look at supporting economic development and the vibrancy of downtown and creating a complete street. So what are complete streets? So, Complete Streets policy ensures that the entire right-of-way is planned, designed, and operated and maintained to provide safe access for all users. So that is, in addition to cars, that's pedestrians, bicyclists, and people visiting in all means. So when this pilot project was established to see if this would work, there were some objectives. And those objectives were not tied to, clearly, to congestion management, right? If you're going from two lanes down to one lane, you're not, your goal isn't just to improve traffic for cars. There were other goals. So those included improving the livability and the economic vitality of the downtown, supporting pedestrians, accommodating bicyclists, reducing the noise and air pollution where people are living and shopping, and really creating a vibrant downtown that's safe and people want to come visit, and make sure you're preserving the accessibility for the things that are happening downtown. Going backwards now, sorry. So, the pilot project itself, as you can kind of see from the picture there, what it really did is it took one of the vehicle lanes and turned it into a buffer bicycle lane. So it really changed traffic each direction. And this was a setup based for the trial. As you can see, the bike lane is very wide bike lane, but it was really stuff for this test. So what happened in 2015? We tried, we were going to try it for six months. We ran out of time and tried it for, I'd say, a little over five months, but had to cut the trial. It was a little bit short because of some of the construction that was happening. And there were a couple of things that we looked at at the end of the project. So one of the areas was surveys, right? So we did an exit survey for residents. And I'm sure this is what, you know, many of our residents talked about the whole time, was two out of three residents responded to the survey, were not in favor of keeping the Complete Streets project. And the majority of those that were people that posted were people that primarily drove through the downtown, not people who were using this often. From a business perspective, on the surveys, there were mixed results. The city didn't exit survey as part of the project, and the Chamber of Commerce did one, and there were mixed results. But the other component that was really looked at was from the Complete Streets perspective, and that was the project monitoring report. I should mention, all these surveys are available on our website. If you click from the homepage, you look at community projects, it'll be one of the things listed there. So all this information I'm talking about is on there. But so as we looked at the project moderate report, evaluated the effectiveness of the project for creating or for implementing the objectives of the Complete Streets. Jeez. Okay, I'm hitting the wrong button. So before we get into what those objectives were, the pilot project itself, like I said, lasted for close to five months. But there were things that were evaluated across the time. So there were things that were evaluated before the pilot project started, and that was December through February 2015. And then there was a mid-project evaluation, and those were two times that things were tested between February and June, and then the end of the pilots, looking at what happened at the end of the pilot. And it's important to distinguish those because a lot of things that were not as smooth in the middle of the pilot actually smoothed out by the end of the pilot. There definitely was considerable community frustration at the middle of the pilot. But some of the things actually changed for the better at the end of the pilot. And that was, you know, people shifting from using Monterey as a thoroughfare to using Butterfield Boulevard as their primary route. And then as the same shifted towards the end of the pilot, the traffic became more consistent, and there were more benefits seen. So, so in this evaluation, this is some of the key criteria that was looked at. So there was more diversity in the people that were visiting downtown, more youth visiting downtown, less people riding sidewalks. One of the really cool things that happened during the project is the trucks that would go through downtown were diverted for this project. And that's something that I think has been beneficial and stayed that way, and moved them over to Butterfield. So there was a significant decrease in noise that occurred during the pilot. More people were parking in downtown. The number of people riding bikes downtown tripled, and there were more people riding public transit by a small amount. And then travel time reliability increased towards the end of the pilot project. And that, what that meant is, you know, at the beginning of the pilot, people didn't know how long it was going to take them to get through downtown. By the end of it, it was pretty consistent, and people were able to plan. And then, you know, the pilot did not slow down traffic. Traffic stayed, the average traffic speed through downtown stayed about the same. So people were driving at an average of 20 miles per hour before and during. So that didn't change. There was no real impact on emergency response increase in collisions. Those numbers are really small, so it's hard to kind of evaluate that. We have very, very limited number of collisions in general in the area. And then, as I know, the trucks got diverted to Butterfield Boulevard. So at the end of this, city staff and our consultant Alter Plan presented these results to the city council. And the city council did elect to return the configuration to two lanes each direction and add some additional safety improvements. That includes you've seen a signal that was added at Fourth Street. We added flashing pedestrian-activated lights at Third Street, which they have stuff that's going in at First Street and Fifth Street in the near future. And we implemented the crosswalk flag and many other pedestrian safety enhancements, including some lighting and other things in the downtown and follow-up. And then the city council did request that this review of this item come back at a future date to the council when other congestion management improvements were added. All right, so consideration. So this was brought really broad. We put this at a Town Hall meeting either last week or two weeks ago. Someone said, can we bring back the Complete Streets? Is that something we can do? The answer is, of course, yes, and it would be a decision made by our city council. If we wanted to do it in the same model, the design was going to be pretty good, but there would be some minor modifications made to that design and reinstated. We think from a perspective of the pilot project, even though it was five years ago, in general, the data that we were able to generate is really good on what would happen as far as supporting Complete Streets and supporting this in the future. What, you know, lots of people are talking about, well, if COVID-19 really does transform how we work and one out of three people start working from home, then we might not have the traffic we've had, and we'll have that relief. But that's not something we can hang our hats on and say, yeah, we can move this project forward because we know we're going to have less traffic because people are going to be telecommuting. That's just, that's just not realistic for us to assume, even in another year. Who knows what the patterns are going to be? It's just, it's too difficult for us to foresee that. And it's difficult for us to, you know, plan a traffic model when we don't know what is going to happen in that area. We also, Maureen's been, we've been getting lots of emails over the last couple of weeks. And I think she's got more than me, but we don't believe there's any real change in the residents' sentiment as far as their perspective on this. And the one thing we've talked about, it's been brought up on this, is can we just do this for the short term and do it to open up space for businesses? Doing the Complete Streets effectively without the bike lane for the short term is not something that's going to be inexpensive. Like to replicate it, depending on our needs, we're talking more than likely over $100,000 to re-implement it. So it's not something easily put into place and taken out. Although, although it can be. It's not something we recommend with limited funds right now. And, you know, in general, as far as the Complete Streets go, adding the bike lane, if we were to recommend something right now, obviously, still more discussion to come. And the city council said, yes, we want to re-implement this. Using the bike lane versus making that all for business use might still be a good idea because you can, you can actually push out in the parking spaces that we have, create the parklet spaces, and still have the expense for businesses while you're keeping the traffic farther away from the people that are dining or using that for retail in the future. We do, we do also have other alternatives for additional space that we're going to talk about just in a minute or so. And I'm going to kind of keep moving on because I know there'll be questions on the Complete Streets implementation. But just to go through some of the other things we've really been talking about over the last month, just based on, you know, things that have come up from the community as it relates to coming out of COVID-19. And one of the points is, you see it on social media. I see it, and my wife passed me out. Why don't we just close Monterey Road completely? Well, closing Monterey Road completely, you know, permanently, that's not something we have studied, and that's not something that's been in our transportation element. And that would take a considerable amount of work for us to go through an evaluation to see if that's something that's even feasible. So that is not something we could do quickly for a permanent basis at all, even if the council said, Chris, start working on it tomorrow, or Christina told me, get to work. It's not something we could do quickly. Now, we do have some background because we do events down in the downtown and close Monterey Road for those events through the downtown. So is there a possibility of closing Monterey Road for weekends only? Yes, but that cost is extremely high, and we estimate that cost at over $250,000 a year for a once-a-week closure that closes and then reopens. Just a very, very expensive cost. And doing that kind of really alters traffic patterns and creates some other issues. So it's not something we would really recommend at this point. Now, what we do think has a lot of promise, and Edith has talked about this in the economic recovery planning that she's been doing, is enhancing our parklet program. And that's the use of parking spaces that are directly adjacent to the the businesses in the sidewalk. So for example, this is, this is one that was constructed last time around. And you can see how the parklet expands the space from the sidewalk out into the right-of-way. And you can see here, there's still two lanes of traffic here, and that parklet is extending out into the parking spaces. In addition to that, and Edith has talked about this as well, we are really going to work on streamlining our policies to allow use of sidewalk space more than we have in the past, as well as the parklets. And we have a good opportunity to move that forward really quickly to help businesses get out there when we do get the okay from the county and state for them to reopen. And then another interesting one that has been talked about, and we had questions, I think it was at one of our Town Hall meetings, we had questions on this too, is can we close our side streets instead of closing Monterey Road? Or with Monterey Road, can we close some of the side streets? So just logistically, you have a little diagram we've put together here. And there's just a couple of hurdles to say if we want to close, you know, all of First Street or Second Street between Monterey and Depot. And the biggest hurdle is many people live on those streets. So it's nearly impossible to say, hey, we're going to permanently close a street, and you no longer have access to your driveway. But where we've been looking and where we see maybe opportunity, and we're continuing to look at, is the areas of the side streets that are really adjacent to the businesses that are on Monterey Road. And those may actually provide an opportunity for us to do some closures of the side streets to help businesses on an interim or on a permanent basis. So something that's feasible. In the diagram, you see the little like in this area, that is a potential closure of, say, First Street. And the closure would occur potentially somewhere before it reaches residents' driveway, so they'd still be able to access by Depot Street. We have a lot of work to do in doing something like this to make it work, including working with our engineering team, our teammates to public safety, as well as residents and businesses. But it's something that's an opportunity. And then the last piece I just want to touch on is something other cities are really looking at to help businesses coming out of COVID-19. So, hang on one sec. Let me see if I can fix this. Someone said, I'm having trouble with audio, so I'm trying to turn off my background.
Chris, if you're making any adjustments, your audio's a little choppy. So just while you're in there changing things.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, Michelle. I saw your text, sorry.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm not sure if I can do that. Do I sound okay now, or is it still choppy?
Better.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. So just looking through here, the red blocks you see on the screen are actually city-owned property, whether that's a park space, a plaza, or a parking lot. So one of the other things that many cities are doing is really opening up those spaces, especially for businesses that come out when we come out of the shelter in place or have restrictions from the shelter in place to look at opportunities for businesses to take space that is typically public space, but use it to expand and support them. You can see the red locations aren't necessarily always right next to where the businesses are, but in some cases they are. And in some cases, there might be opportunities for businesses to expand dining or retail into those areas if they're in confined spaces. So we really want to talk through that opportunity too with our local businesses. In both cases, or in all cases really, whether it's the side streets, developing parklets, using the public space, I think what we're trying to say from the city perspective is we're open to trying to help make those things happen if we can do them safely. And of course, there's some work to be done, like I said, from the public safety perspective. But it also has to make sense for the businesses, and it has to make sense for the residents that are living down there, or else it just doesn't work. And what I don't have on this map, I've really been focused on the public spaces, but Edith and our other teammates have really talked about how can we relax restrictions on private spaces and private parking lots and other spaces that can be used. So looking at our public spaces in conjunction with those private spaces, parking lots, and other things, we think there's a real opportunity for us to really work as we come out of the shelter in place to support the businesses in the downtown and across the city as well. With that, I'm going to stop talking because it's taken me a little longer than I thought, and we can, I think, open up for questions, if that's okay, Christina.
Yeah, yeah. So, Chris, I'll go ahead and just read the questions, and then we can figure out if it's you or someone else. So, starting with, I have a business on the west side of Monterey. There was standstill cars starting around 2:00 every weekday. Our business was down about 25% by the time this was over. People stopped coming down because of all the traffic. I think this is great for the weekend, but not for the weekdays. Thank you for that comment. The next one, how many housing units have been added in Morgan Hill along Monterey Road since 2015? I see that we have Leslie on. We also have Jennifer on. Do either of you have an approximate number on the units since 2015 for Monterey Road?
We would need to do some research to get to the date. I could give you an approximate since 2017. However, that would not be, probably would not be complete.
Okay, so that's from Jenny Redfern. So let's make sure that we have your email. We can share that with you.
Absolutely.
Okay. By the way, Chris is sound. Okay, we got that. Okay, so the next one is, wasn't the pilot program impacted by the downtown improvements construction, which moved lane closures around in distraction of work? Chris?
I think Maureen can answer this one. She's nodding, but the answer was there was some impact for sure. Yeah, it was a very, very busy time.
Yeah, and some of the things that needed to get going in the construction were the reason that we actually had to stop because we were going to move into the lane closures related to the construction. And they did change around. So yes, that was definitely a part of what happened.
Anonymous Arrow works really well for homes and gets the kids off the Wi-Fi. Lots of laugh. Good luck on that. Sumon says, thank you. It's clear now. All right, Brittany, our CEO from the Chamber of Commerce. Would you consider closing chunks of Monterey, for example, between First and Second, Second and Third, Third and Fourth, and leaving the side streets open for residents to park and move around? This is what Hollister's implemented every Friday to Sunday through August, and so far, it has been working beautifully.
Yeah, and I grew up in Hollister, and my sister has been down there and had a good time at their opening, I guess, weekend, having dinner. I think the big difference between us and Hollister is the amount of traffic that goes through, and then the system of streets that are next to us, where Hollister really does have a pretty good grid system, where they have multiple streets on either side. We run into a little bit of an issue because Del Monte on one side runs into Nob Hill and doesn't get through. And Depot Street from Main, when you get down to Dunn, doesn't align with Church, which may be something that's changed in the future. But we're limited. And we also, we also do face that considerable amount of pass-through traffic that comes into town and uses our streets because of the impacts of 101. Hollister used to be that way, and I think it was 10 or 15 years ago. They moved, they built a complete bypass for downtown, for Highway 25, to run a different direction. So they just don't have the traffic we have. And they had converted their roadway to a single- we have. And they had converted their roadway to a single lane each direction a couple of years ago, before they even got to this point.
Okay, the next question. A new hotel with conference rooms and downstairs businesses is being built on Monterey Downtown. How does it make sense to restrict traffic lanes and or close side streets when more businesses are planned on Monterey Downtown? I just saw Edith's video pop up and I was going to direct this question to you anyway because I think you might have some inside scoop on this.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the question. It's it's interesting. We were asking the same question of the hotel developer. His feelings regarding the potential road closures and and what might be needed. Certainly, the the type of hotel that he is building is is a higher-end upscale hotel. And the feedback that he has shared with us is that that he would like to see Morgan Hill move to to creating a more walkable-friendly downtown. He has expressed concerns about the amount of traffic on Monterey and the big trucks and the speeding that is happening. And and says that that is not conducive to having the the pedestrian-friendly environment that that he's hoping to capture with the hotel development. But what he would recommend for us and has conveyed to us is that he his preference would be to do a full street closure of all the the traffic and just allow the restaurants and the businesses and the community to push out and and utilize the the space for for themselves.
Thank you, Edith. From Brittany, what type of barriers are being considered? Are businesses expected to set their own barriers or will the city purchase, set up, and manage the barriers?
Yeah, so we've been we've been looking into that. And some of the some of the difficulty, like for the parklets that we've had, is providing something that's safe and structurally safe. So we're looking at some alternatives where to find something that would be easy for the businesses or potentially for us as a city, if we're working on streets, to do something with parklets at the same time and look at some barriers. And they might be barriers that might take a little more decorating to make them look nice. But they might be easier to get in quickly and ensure safety in a really quick manner. So we're we're looking at that. And then we think there's some opportunity to partner. And that could be something that the city council discusses next week.
Okay, the downtowns of Livermore, Palo Alto, the Mayfield District, Willow Glen, et cetera, have been complete for some time and appear very successful. Have we asked them what works and what doesn't?
Yeah, I think Edith and Maureen spent a lot of time, as our consultants did, if either one of you want to answer.
Yeah, we've certainly with the community before doing the pilot program, we spent quite a bit of time visiting and speaking with businesses and planning staff from Mountain View, Livermore, and a number of other facilities, cities, including Los Altos, and exploring how they were experiencing their their road diets. I think that what we've learned is that, and it was implemented in the recommendation that we did for the pilot project, is that it's it's a combination of doing things that is not just for the businesses. It's also about being able to create space for the community. It is about being able to make the the business district more accessible and bikeable. So having a bike lane being a critical component for for people to be able to choose a different mode of transportation. The conversation today is different because because of COVID, we are kind of looking at it as or right now, how it has been brought up. It has been in the context of of businesses just simply needing to survive and needing to push out. And what is it that cities are doing? Cities across the nation are just pushing out and closing streets. And again, I think that for for us here, being that we have this dynamic of of limited north-south roadways. As Chris mentioned, having the ability to have access by vehicle is is important, but also being able to accomplish the the bikeability, walkability, and giving residents a little bit of extra elbow room. Because some people, while some might be comfortable coming out and enjoying the restaurants and the retail spaces again, other ones may want to have just more space.
So I, you mentioned, the questioner mentioned the Mayfield, which is the California Avenue project that I worked on. And I would, just a little bit of my experience was that there was a lot of angst over that project when it was first proposed. And in fact, several businesses sued to stop the project. When it was finally built, the same businesses that sued to stop the project were among those that were the happiest with the way that it turned out and the outcome of it. So I think it's it's scary when you make those kinds of changes, but the end result can be extremely positive.
And and another really good example, Don, is most recently Willow Glen, Lincoln Avenue, right? Where they were looking at at creating that space a little bit more bikeable. And and I know that they're currently actively looking at whether it's a full closure and how do they allow those businesses now to overtake those, they call it business recovery zones.
Okay, from Jim Kraus, parklet should work great for the restaurants. Only close the parking spaces, not the lanes of traffic. Why is that not acceptable?
I don't think we're saying that's not acceptable. I think we're saying that's that is something we would definitely look into.
How do you reconcile the results of the study you had done and the observations of some in the community?
So I think I think there were two definitely distinct things. And if you read kind of the staff report and you look at the 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 monitoring report or that that we did, there was two parts of the evaluation. There was obviously the public perception from our residents. There was perception from different businesses, which was one way. And then there was the evaluation we did for the for the for the pilot project itself. Obviously, if you're a person that's driving through downtown, especially in those early months of the trial and you're taking your child back and forth from to Britton Middle School from the south and you're hitting that traffic for the first time and you're not expecting it, that's going to be a lot of frustration. And I think there's a lot, and rightfully so, that's something you're not used to. And it it is frustrating. Traffic frustrates all of us more than almost anything else, right? So there's no contention that the that residents did did not like it. But there is, a higher percentage of residents did not approve of the project. But there is a contention that, long term, you know, some of the benefits of a complete street project would end up being a larger benefit for us in town. And then and that's just going back to, you know, some of the conversation we had a minute ago, saying what has worked in other communities and learning from them and moving forward. But 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 either way, whether we move back to the complete streets project or not, there's still opportunities to continue to improve our downtown. So that's why we're having the dialogue.
Is there a financial impact to the parklet idea? And what are the safety measures the city would put in place to ensure public safety as this space is opened up? So taking it one at a time, Chris, we know that if we were to move forward with the parklet idea, there is a financial impact. And do we, you know, have anything we want to share about that?
Yeah, I think we found some, like, so if, like, so Brittany brought up what they're doing at Hollister. Hollister, to to create safety, they they put a bunch of K-rail around. K-rail, those big white things that look like medians of the highway. And you can put those, they're very heavy and they will stop a car. And so they've used that. And that's not an expense, that's an inexpensive way to do it. It's not the best looking. So in our prior parklet process, we were really encouraging businesses to ensure that, you know, there were aesthetics. So looking at doing planners, but like things that aren't traffic safety devices. They're harder to do the background on, will this structurally work to stop the car? So I think what we're considering now in discussions with Edith is can we do some of these things that we know will work quickly and safely and implement them, which might not cost a whole lot for a business or for the city to to do?
And the advantage of doing something like what Chris is talking about is that it would also help us ease some of the requirements we would put on businesses in terms of insurance. So we're looking at the ways that we can do this and is most efficient, both for the city and for the businesses that might want to use that that parklet space.
So the the second part is just about the public safety. And, you know, how do we ensure public safety if we open the space up?
Yeah, and I think they're tied together. So just the point that we need to approve traffic safety devices and approve traffic management for the traffic safety piece to make sure people aren't coming into contact with vehicles. And all those aspects need to be looked at. And from our engineering team to some of our consultants that we have work on that. And then not only from that perspective, but how does our teammates in public safety and police and fire are ensuring they can still respond to those areas if we put some of those things into place? So we have to, we have to look at all those things, but we have a good team that we think we can, we can look at them really quickly.
Okay, as someone mentioned, other cities and districts have done this. Can we share the results with the community? It's natural to be concerned, but the end results have been positive. Thank you. So just a request to share what, you know, other cities and districts have done. Okay, this must be costly to do. If the city is such a, is in such a deficit at this time, why not wait and see what the aftermath of COVID is? So Chris, do you want to just kind of talk about originally when we went away with the configuration, we said that we'd come back later. And I think we're coming back earlier than anticipated. And so why now?
I think I think the conversation was brought forward and rightfully so. So remember, as we come out of of COVID-19, it's not, it's not just about making sure the restaurants have a space to to move out to and retail has a space to move out to. We want to help them do that. We absolutely want to find every way to help them do that for the short term. But as we come out of this, this isn't going to be, okay, we're done in six months and there's a vaccine and now we're back to normal. I think the opportunity is to say, hey, how do we continue to push forward to make some of these things maybe more permanent, to keep supporting how things work and how we enhance our downtown and help our businesses? Because even after they come out of this, six months later, they might be able to reopen, but they're going to be hurting so much from the last six months that that we need to figure out how to get more people downtown. And I think that's that's the discussion of the complete streets, as well as the other improvements we're talking about. So short and long term. So in justifying spending money, it really, we would try and do things as fiscally responsibly as we can. But like the city does in all areas, it's, you know, spending money to help economic development that will help be a return on investment to our businesses and the city long term. So that spending money would have a potential return on investment.
Why did the city council want to resurface this discussion? Clearly, when the city authorized more housing around downtown, they knew it would come with more cars and therefore traffic. Perhaps more parking is required and less focus on closing Monterey, which will impact downtown businesses. Any comment that we want to make about the more parking and less thoughts on closure?
Yeah, and I think we've we've been working to 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 provide more parking downtown than we've done a lot. We have, we have good parking. When downtown is really busy, you'll still see, especially on weekends and evenings, there'll still be spaces in the VTA lot. We know it's a little bit of a walk, but compared to most cities, it's it's not a far walk. So we've done, we've done good on parking. Yes, people who are moving into the houses drive cars, and that's just the way of life, and we have to recognize that. But from us, from a city perspective, even those moving into downtown, they will have an impact. But the greater impact that we see is the construction and building to the south of us that's pushing traffic off of 101 into our town. And that's something we have to kind of continue to advocate for too. Because no matter what we do in our town, we can't stop all that that's coming from the south.
We have a hand that's been raised, so we're going to transition to that. So Michelle, if I can actually maybe do that, I'm going to unmute Steve Malik. Okay, Steve, you should be unmuted.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, Chris. That was excellent information. I I think my only point is that I know that the downtown businesses, especially the restaurants, are really getting hammered right now. And I think that some people don't know what is their minimum level of operation. For some, it's maybe 90% of where they were. And having a parklet isn't going to help them in a COVID situation where they've got to remove half of their tables. So you got to make that up somewhere. And my only suggestion is, maybe you should, or when we know, have a better idea of what is going to be required for this pandemic and maybe future pandemics, how do we make adjustments for those restaurants? You know, otherwise, in order for them to stay afloat, you know, they're going to really have to raise their prices significantly if they're going to be removing tables. So I don't know if a parklet, you know, those things are nice, but I don't know if it's the solution. Because, you know, we could be spending some good money on it and it's only a drop in the bucket and they're going to go under anyway without something serious. And I think that the residents of Morgan Hill, if they knew what the situation was or were aware that, hey, in order for these restaurants to survive, we're going to have to make some room for them. And this is the sacrifice that we're going to have to make. And if we're going to do it, this would be the time to do it, when everybody's understanding that sacrifices have to be made in order for some parts of our lives to remain intact. So that's my only comment. And if we can't do that, then I don't know what restaurants downtown are going to make it, you know, for the next two years or so. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, from Rick Kent, I like closing Monterey for the weekend and letting all retail and all restaurants use the common space. Thank you for that input. Okay, we have, you're speaking of other cities and their successes. Is their city streetscape the same as ours? We don't have many other ways to get through our city. Perhaps waiting until the San Jacinto extension is finished, then see if this is feasible. It could slow a lot down. That's why our current mayor voting no on this five years ago. Any thoughts that we want to convey on that?
I mean, I would just note that Hale Avenue extension is still moving forward. And we we will have, I believe, on the 17th funding agreement from the VTA to fund our portion of that extension to start construction this fall. And with that said, it's it's going to be probably two years before that project's completed. So just timing on that is a couple of years away.
Could side streets be made one way, not close it permanently, to enable some area in front of businesses to push out? And that's a question from Sumon, but it's the Morgan Hill Downtown Association question.
Yes, and we have looked at that before. There may be, it may actually be a better opportunity for closing the whole street in front of the restaurant and leaving one end of the street open. That may work better, but that that is an opportunity too. And that is something we looked at previously. When we looked at it previously, it wasn't for a restaurant expansion. It was more for expansion of parking spaces if we went to to one-way streets in some areas. So on some streets, it's possible, and some streets, it's not.
So we have another question from Sumon. Could businesses get permission to use their adjacent alleyways and portions of their own parking lots for operation?
Yeah, and I think Edith Edith has talked about this. So I think the idea is the relaxed relaxing of any restrictions on those things. And Don could probably answer this too. But that's exactly what the city is going to be trying to do and help them with.
I mean, there's the only couple of impediments are the property owners have to agree. And then we have minimum parking requirements for certain uses. And we're going to be relaxing those at least temporarily. So that, for example, not just in the downtown, but in shopping centers and other business districts, we can, you know, we're going to relax our minimum parking standards so that property owners can allow businesses in those centers to use the parking, portions of the parking lot for merchandise or restaurant space or other activities as feasible and appropriate.
Thank you, Don. Anonymous, there was some discussion during the pilot program that the survey performed by the Chamber of Commerce was not statistically valid due to the low number of responses and possible mishandling of the survey responses. Will this survey be given to the city council again? Yeah, I mean, so Chamber of Commerce survey, we, you know, we do have Brittany on, but I assume this was a survey that was a while ago that's being referred to?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I'll chime in on that. You know, I think that that our plan from city staff is to provide the council with any and all information we have. And and we, as Chris mentioned, the information and the feedback from the community was a little bit all over the place. When the pilot project was being tested, it was, it was also during a very difficult time with construction of new projects. There was a lot of going on at that time that I think was also being part of that mix. But I also wanted to chime in on, on the previous question and comment that was made. I think it was about allowing businesses to push out into driveways and, and parking lots, and what does that look like? We're going to the city council on June 3rd to talk about that. I think that right now, everything is on the table. We're looking at everything and anything. But I, I do think that one of the conversations for the community is, and I think, and somebody from the community already talked about this. So how do we position ourselves to be resilient? And if we're going to be having future pandemics or situations like this, what is the best thing that the city and the community can do to, to have a sustainable, long-term solution to, to this, to this? And, and, and to, again, achieving the goal of, of trying to make downtown the most walkable, bike-friendly district in the city. And I think that that's where the balancing act comes in between the one, one alternative versus other ones.
Thank you, Edith. Okay, so I think we, there's a question from M. Murph about closing down side street closures. Is it possible to make them one-way and allow businesses to use a closed lane? I think we handled that one. Kristen Carlson, there does not seem to be enough parking for what you were proposing. How far should people walk, especially the ones from out of town? There's not enough parking as it is due to all the building now and taking parking spaces away. Is there such a need for a bike lane? All traffic will be pushed into the neighborhoods. Thank you.
So we did, we did have results from the pilot project on where the traffic was pushed. And a whole bunch of it was pushed into, onto Butterfield. Some of the, some of the, some of the traffic on the west side was pushed on the city streets, primarily obviously Peak Avenue and Hale Avenue, depending on which, which time of traffic. The Hale Avenue extension will, will resolve some of that. But, but there is, there is a pathway for traffic to move now, and that is, that is Butterfield. And that, that was the intention of the construction of Butterfield. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's really the, the answer.
Great, thank you, Chris. Okay, so Alan has his hand raised, and so I'm going to go ahead and unmute Alan.
Hello?
Okay, you're on.
Okay, yeah, my name's Alan. I addressed this, you know, five years ago at the city council, I brought it up, you know, being a resident on the, on the northwest side of Morgan Hill by Yoggus and Hale. Basically, five years ago, they said, you know, before ever revisiting this thing, you know, we had to look at other things, you know. 101's, you know, still today backs up to Bailey and it has the four lanes down to three lanes. So there's lots of traffic because there's a lot of building and stuff down Gilroy people are passing through. Monterey on Knights goes all the way back to, you know, Live Oak and Palm, you know, trying to pick your kid up at Charter and going through and fighting traffic all the time. Hale, you know, backs up to the Mushroom Factory all the time. And if you keep closing, if you try to close Monterey, like I said, five years ago, us people on, around Yoggus and Hale, we have a hard time bypassing and getting through things because Hale's backed all the way up and everybody wants to go downhill. And then they turn on the right to Peak or take the other streets there. And all the other roads are all just, you know, backed up for us even trying to get to downtown or do anything. And I thought, I mean, I don't know why you're revisiting this thing. I thought maybe it should get, you already added the signal light in Monterey to help in the crosswalks. But wouldn't you want to do this after maybe someday 101 gets widened to four lanes through Morgan Hill? Or you also add, you want, somebody was talking about the Monterey to Butterfield project somewhere where people can get off because Monterey is so backed up and turning. And you just make it really tough for us residents in the Yoggus, Hale, back in that area, even get across town to downtown one way or another. And I think the way it is, it's just let it be because there's just more building going south than a lot more cars coming through. And there's really no other side roads or roads for us people on the west side of Morgan Hill to even get through or down to anything. And I go through this south traffic every single day, and it just keeps backing up, backing up even with the COVID stuff. You know, 101's already still backed up to Bailey now in the afternoons, and Monterey is still backed up. So just want to figure out why you're still, you're doing this now, and it doesn't make any sense.
So thanks, Alan. I, I don't, we are, we are, we are doing anything. We're, at this point, we're having the conversation, and that's why we're having the meeting to take all the input. And the city council will hear and get this input. So we aren't doing anything except having a discussion, discussion on it. But I do, I do, we, we all recognize that the traffic is not improving in our city. And the primary, primary reason for that is the pass-through traffic that you've indicated on, on Highway 101. And unless, unless we're able to expand the highway or see a considerable amount of people to the south of us begin to use public transportation or telecommute, we're not going to be able, as a city ourselves, to, to improve the situation. There's just, the numbers coming from the south are just too great for, for us to try and overcome on our own. But, but we are going to keep working on those things in, in general.
Okay, so the next question deal with the cost of parklets. How much do parklets cost with the city help businesses with it? And that's from Suman, Morgan Hill Downtown Association question. And then the next question, very similar is, so now you're asking the businesses to pay 15,000 to 20,000 for these, depending on how long it would take a business to recoup. Many won't be able to afford it. Go ahead, Chris.
I was going to say, the, I think the way we're looking at the parklet now, like if you just want to have seating in that area and you're bringing out the tables and chairs, you might not have to pay much of anything else except putting your, your space out there and providing the improved, the traffic, safety devices. And that is something we're talking about, the city potentially looking at, maybe not funding for the businesses, maybe funding, but, but supporting getting that in place. So I don't know that you have to build a whole structure to, to create the parklet. You'd probably be able to do something pretty inexpensively.
Edith, do you want to add anything to that?
Just, just that that is part of our revisions in the economic development, economic recovery strategy is to, is to make changes to the existing program to do what Chris just said, to reduce the expectations of the build-out of potential parklets and just let the parklets be a little bit more nimble, if you will. And that is part of our, our conversation and our staff report for the upcoming council meeting.
Great. What are the plans to add lanes to 101 so we can keep traffic flowing south and not clogging our neighborhood streets and downtown thoroughfare? Chris, that's certainly on our.
Yeah. The state Caltrans, in their highway plan for the 101 corridor, has a project identified that would create a fourth lane through Morgan Hill down to, to through Gilroy, basically the Highway 25, which we think will stop a considerable amount of the traffic that gets bottled up right at, at Cochrane, between Cochrane and just past Cochrane going north. We really, and then obviously coming south when you hit that traffic coming back into town on 101. So we, we don't, that, that project is not funded by the state. And the state has, the state has really not looked to fund a lot of highway expansion projects. So it's something we are advocating for, not only us, but we have our partners in, our partners in Gilroy and at the county and working with VTA and ultimately MTC to say, we need these prioritized for our, not just for Morgan Hill, but for all of Silicon Valley. Because as the businesses to the north grow, they attract more people to the south of us, and they're impacting us. So there's a plan to do it, there's just no money behind it. So we, as Morgan Hillians and Santa Clara Countyans, we need to advocate to our state representatives and, and make that a reality sooner rather than later.
Well said, Chris. The next is a comment. I understand what happened as far as the Monterey issue from five years ago, but we're looking at where we are in 2020 with the increase in population and the lack of 101 expansion. Alan is so on point, I am in the same place, more people and more traffic. We have to look strategically, five to 10 years out, not for just today. And then we have a question from Jenny, will the high-speed rail project come through downtown Morgan Hill? How would that and a one-lane Monterey affect each other? Edith, you want to answer that?
Yeah, we are also, on June 3rd, we're going to be talking about this if people want to tune in and, and just for the high-speed rail. 101, the west side of 101, the other one is at a grade on the existing tracks and, and the other one is on the west side of, of the tracks. So one of the things that we are evaluating right now is what is the impact of traffic and circulation? Specifically, if there is not a great separation. And, and certainly, I think that for us, is one of the biggest issues is making sure that emergency services can respond on time. You know, when it comes down to, to the traffic, realizing that there's a lot of concern about traffic. And I, I think as Chris mentioned at the beginning, you know, the, the development, construction that is happening south of us is always going to kind of have traffic going through our Monterey road. So the question is, as a community, what does the community want downtown to look like? Because the traffic is likely not to, to be able to go away or, or be relieved by high-speed rail or freeway expansion someday.
Okay, and our last question before we have two attendees that have their hands raised, is there VTA or federal funding to this, Chris?
No.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we have two attendees that have their hands raised. The first one is Carrie. We'll go ahead and unmute you.
Hi there. Hey, so I'm Carrie from the Downtown Association. And just, first off, I just very much appreciate you guys holding these town halls. And we, so as part of the Downtown Association, we did a quick polling to basically take a temperature reading with our Downtown Association members, which is made up of businesses and residents all in the downtown. And just to get their, their sense of, you know, where they, where they are right now relative to the Monterey diet. We didn't talk about the side street closures or anything like that. We just, at a very high level, just wanted to get a sense from the downtown, how they felt about this. And we sent it out early today. So the, the early results, they're simply early. They're nowhere near statistically significant, significantly, significantly, significant, statistically significant. But, but, you know, we, we asked them about, you know, are, are you, you know, kind of, do you support this or you don't? Will it help your growth business? Will it hurt your business? How would you use the additional space? And if you're not using the additional space, why not? And we asked them about, you know, what their, what their concerns might be. And so early, early on, I would just say that it's about a 50/50 mix. So early on, we're getting about 45% that are positive and want to support this, maybe 55 again. So I'd say about, you know, 50/50. The, the one thing that does come up as a concern is traffic. About 64% so far have said that the traffic is a concern. And about 10% said parking is a concern. Now, this is early on, we don't have all of the details. We will send all of this to you guys, so you guys have whatever it is that, you know, that can help. But just wanted to share that, you know, that, that kind of, that early results, for only a few hours into this.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Jim?
Yeah, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes. Your mic, your mic is unmuted. You had your hand raised. Do you have any?
No, 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 no. There was a fly in front of me. No, it was an accident. I'm sorry. But thank you for calling me. I, I'll make a comment now. We need to throw the downtown a lifeline. Like, you know, seriously, if these restaurants don't make it the next six months, they're not going to make it at all. So I believe whatever it takes, let's give them a chance. Let, let's save them before they go under, then we have to find new tenants. And the bank will not lend a new, new restaurant. So that's my two cents. Thank you for having this tonight.
Thank you, Jim. All right, our next caller with his hand raised is Nathan. And let's see here, your line is unmuted.
Hi.
Go ahead.
All right, is that working now?
Yes.
All right. Hey, thank you for bringing this up again. I'll chime in since I live downtown with my wife. And when we spoke on this five years ago, a lot has changed since that time in the downtown. We have a parking garage, we have a train park, which is absolutely awesome, by the way. We have Kelly's Brewery, we have the Running Shop and Haas. We have a lot of reasons for people to come downtown. And five years ago, my wife and I, we did support the complete streets. We enjoyed riding our bicycles downtown to what was down there at the time. I do see an opportunity right now to really expand that. More people are coming downtown. We live downtown, so we do see the impact of parking. But we have a chance here to possibly look over at this again. You know, when you look at various cities, most of them have done a completed streets project. Palo Alto's was done in the late 70s as part of their bicycle improvement plan. Livermore is a great example. And as we know, Willow Glen ran their test while we ran ours. They kept theirs. We did not keep ours. If you look at pictures of the Willow Glen city council meetings, it was, there were a lot of people on both sides. There was standing room only in those meetings. So it is common for a lot of concerns to come up. But I think what we need to remember is the bigger picture here is creating space for people, for the restaurants to push out with the parklets, if they're affordable. And I think we need to just remember that's what the point of this is. If our goal is to, to always improve traffic, then we will never look at complete streets. Because obviously, if the goal is to complete traffic, then let's just build more lanes, right? Why don't we make downtown three lanes each way then? That's not the goal of this. The goal is to create a space for people. So yeah, I'm very interested to see how this develops this time with the city council things. So thank you. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Nathan. So we don't have any additional questions or hands raised. It is a bit past 6:30, but before we close, any final questions or comments from the group?
Christina, and maybe just to, to kind of give a like prefer to next week's council meeting. So this will be on the city council's agenda for discussion. We aren't asking the council, I don't, to make a decision on moving forward or not next week. It's really a policy direction and not just on the complete streets, but on the other items we talked about as well.
Thank you, Chris. Tony Navy says, thank you all for putting this together. We appreciate your service. Thank you, Tony. Jenny, thank you for your attention to this issue. Thank you. And Steve, good discussion. Thanks. And so with that, hopefully you'll.
We have one more person that raised their hand, Christina.
Ah, thank you, Edith, for noticing that. Nick, let's go ahead and get you unmuted.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Chris for all his work, not only for today's presentation, but his insights on the history of what's happened to date. And I just want to reaffirm or affirm Nathan's last comment. You're right, if the goal was, was concerning or concentrated around traffic, this would be a non-issue. But obviously, we're looking at repurposing for different events based on the circumstances at hand. So the only thing that I would request that is you take it to the city council next week, that it's not, it's not taken to the city council as an isolated activity or an item, but is looked at comprehensively as a component of need with a greater business recovery plan in general. So the city council and Americans fully understand and recognize are not only the importance of what this component is, but how does it fit into the overall policy changes that you're looking to recommend? And what's the net effect of that, not only short-term, but more importantly, long-term for, as we start to look beyond just recovery and stabilization, but for a renewal of who we are and what we believe in as far as this, the downtown of Morgan Hill. So I wanted to recognize Chris for his work and his insights. And just again, recommend that we take this as an integrated approach and not a single activity to the city council so they can fully appreciate all the issues that are at hand.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. And Suman says, thank you. So I think that concludes our questions for this evening. Join us Wednesday, June 3rd. We have a pretty full agenda with a lot of good topics. So with that, have a great rest of the evening. Bye. with that, have a great rest of the evening. Bye.